At this time, I will call this meeting to order. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker?
Present.
Commissioner Bodak?
Here.
Commissioner Dellisfort?
Present.
Commissioner Granados?
Here.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Here.
Commissioner Mirabella? Commissioner Williams?
Uh, here.
Vice Chairwoman Leon?
Here.
And Chairwoman Palmieri-Muddad?
Here.
At the record reflect, you have eight commissioners present for this evening's regular meeting.
Thank you. Clerk of the Board, please lead us in the prayer and salute to the flag.
Unbelievable we ask God to give her peace and love her charity to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Clerk of the Board, please read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
The Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of New Jersey Statute Sanitizing Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting with the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024 along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024 in the Administration Building and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024 with the Office of the County Clerk.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the communications?
Sumoed.
Second?
A motion was made by Commissioner Baker and was seconded by Commissioner Dellisfort. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Bodak?
Aye.
Commissioner Dellisfort?
Aye.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Leon?
Aye.
And Chairwoman Palmieri-Muddad?
Aye.
Chairwoman, at the record reflect, you have eight votes in the front row on all the communications.
Thank you. This meeting is now open to the public for the purpose of commenting on resolutions being offered for adoption and/or on any governmental issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern. Kindly state your name and town of residence for the record, and if speaking on a resolution on the agenda, please note the resolution number to which you are referring and adhere to the five-minute time limit.
Hi, it's my name and town? Is that what you said?
Yes.
Diana Gonzalez-Clark. So I'm here to discuss the Clark Reservoir, which is a natural habitat and wildlife preserve. First, I want to thank the county and those who advocated for the reservoir dredging for years, for their investment in the proposed plan. Today, I'd like to confirm who the commissioners are assigned to the open space program for further discussion offline. The plan calls for an impressive park to be built on the currently heavily wooded land beside St. Agnes. The park would include numerous amenities, including a train ride for children, a carousel, a synthetic ice rink, a fire pit, a centerpiece clock tower. I've been in communication with the community through social media, phone calls, and in-person conversations. In fact, a Clark Reservoir Committee has been mobilized. If it were up to me, I'd advocate for dredging and aeration of the reservoir and stop there. I'm not clear if aeration is in scope but needs to be or else the overgrowth will return. Some feel a fishing pier, a boat ramp, and a pedestrian bridge spanning the reservoir parallel to the parkway is okay. Most people feel a simple hiking trail through the woods filled with the sounds of birds and a view of the waterway is where the line should be drawn. While opinions differ, there's a lot of common ground. Nobody wants to see deforestation in favor of paved lots, the kiddie train line, the carousel, and the rest of the aspects that make the project feel more like an amusement park. The reservoir and surrounding area is a wildlife preserve and habitat, and that must be our guiding principle in all that we do. Are you aware that 30% of birds have vanished since 1970 in the U.S.? Habitat loss has been the main cause. In the U.S., a football field of land is lost every 30 seconds to development. Our forests are disappearing and affecting the global tree canopy. We talk a good game about climate change and global warming, but then turn a blind eye to overdevelopment. Part of the rationale for the project is to address flooding. Did you know that one tree consumes 100 to 150 gallons of water per day? Elimination of the forest will run counter to the storm water management objective. We don't need more destruction of the precious little remaining undeveloped space left in this part of crowded New Jersey. And it's not just Clark residents who are disturbed by the scope of the proposal. As Union County taxpayers, Linden residents have expressed dismay at footing their share of the bill. A Westfield publication supports the reservoir dredging but opposes the scope of the proposed recreation area. A petition with support across Union County has been initiated. When I spoke to Victoria Durbin-Drake, the Union County Parks Director, she verified that this is a concept plan that has to pass through hearings and the final project may look different based on community input and hearings. Our committee is in the process of collecting feedback and obtaining petition signatures, which we would like to present to the county in shaping the final design. We don't want to kill the project, we want to right-size it. Clark houses approximately 14,000 residents, unlike Elizabeth Union and Linden with 130,000, 60,000, and 43,000 residents respectively. Clark already has two county parks, Oak Ridge and Esposito, and nearby Roway Park, and so many across the county. We're not lacking in recreation space, we are lacking in open, natural wildlife habitats. Frankly, the county has a difficult time maintaining the parks we already have, and greater funds or attention should be allocated to that endeavor. We'd like to advocate for alternate access points to dredge the reservoir, such as perhaps behind Grand Centurions or the ball field or other creative options. We cannot agree to deforestation as a first resort. Even if access and access road is needed, the size of that road must be kept to the bare minimum. For each tree cut, and hopefully none, we request a tree replanted. In fact, in accordance with a 2024 NJDEP Tree Replacement Ordinance, this is required. We propose dialogue and creative solutions, like running the walking path along the reservoir but bumping it out onto Madison Hill Road rather than running it through residents' backyards. There are creative solutions we can explore together. In summary, I'm here asking for your support in right sizing the scope of the project with the guiding vision of maintaining it a natural habitat and wildlife preserve. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm from Linden. I'm Officer Marissa Taylor. I am one of the demoted sergeants that was laid off, that was part of the layoff, and I currently work at the jail. I am a daughter, a sister, a mother of two, and a bonus mother to the officers at U.C.J. I am here tonight because I have a heavy heart. The nine correction officers that are being laid off were also part of the first layoff plan in 2021. They are more than just a number to be easily discarded. They are my brothers and sisters, and I literally trust them with my life. Gina Lewis is one of the hardest-working females at the jail. Her work ethic is impeccable. She is the sole provider of her daughter. She just came back eight months ago. I have so much compassion for her, knowing she is getting laid off, and she still shows up every day and gives 110%. I can't understand why you would ask her to come back, thank her for coming back, only to let her go. If she goes back to Essex County, they want her to start at the bottom. She has five years of experience in corrections, and she should be paid accordingly. Joshua Gammel, you want to hear a strong boy, he has a set of lungs on him. Josh started on 8B with me as a supervisor. Eager to learn, stepped up to the challenges and he was able to overcome. Coming back into all the jail and still maintains the eagerness to learn and has worked releasing on Friday nights, which is the hardest shift to work. Jack Fedorcheck has two beautiful twins that were just born with his beautiful wife. They are the cutest and the happiest babies you will ever see. Jack is also one of the demoted supervisors, and after the shock wore off of the demotion, somehow, we got through it. But now, him being the first demoted supervisor to be laid off is absolutely crazy. Because of this rushed layoff plan to be approved, no department will hire any of these officers before July 1st. Does anyone even care that they are going to go without a paycheck? Nesta Rivas, a decorated veteran, still serves our country to protect the freedoms that we enjoy but we take for granted. He is a father of four and is recently married. Ness has was my partner for many years on the worst floor of the jail, 10B pod, and when I was assaulted, he immediately stepped into action and he took my assailant down. I guess it doesn't matter that while he gives of himself endlessly, and I mean endlessly, he truly serves the American people. Being laid off twice is the thanks he gets. I don't even know how he was laid off the first time, when he was on emergency orders from the federal government. Go to Essex County, they will take you, everything's all right. The last director that was here, he went to Essex County as a director though now, he got his son hired in Union County sheriffs. He didn't take his son with him, so why is it all right for somebody else's son or daughter to go over there? How safe is it? What is the number of assaults on the officers in Essex County? In the last three years, how many officers have permanently been disabled because of the assaults over in Essex? When you hear that one of your fellow correction officers at Essex County was helping a sergeant and was brutally beaten by an inmate, that's just one incident. Another incident, an officer gets punched in the face so hard he needs major reconstructive surgery to fix his eye socket. I am so compassionate about my brothers and sisters. This is a career we chose, not knowing that the state of New Jersey's corrections is a dying and thankless career. When you take a public sector job, you expect to retire. Now, all I see is anguish, maliciousness, and fabricators of the truth. Then on top of it, this week, not by my employer, but we heard that the department is going to be closing in three years. My question is, is this true? If you plan to close, please tell us. Let us work accordingly. Let this be a smooth transition for you and for me. God bless you, your families, this county, and Jesus bless us all. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm John Victor Jacobson. I live at the end of the Clark Reservoir, a dam site there at Clark, Melvin Court there, and I'm a disabled veteran and a ground zero survivor. I've reached out to some of you in the past about the Clark Reservoir. I've sent you some YouTube videos about, you know, certain things that have to be done there at the Clark Reservoir, including large lake aeration, very important thing. Once you dredge 154 cubic yards of muck out of the reservoir, you have to aerate it, and if you do aerate it, you will prevent it from ever having to be dredged again, which is going to cost, what, 20, 30, 40 million dollars? Do you have prices on that? I bet you do. Anyway, the other thing is, if you're going to build a park, let's call it the St. Agnes Church Park, it'll be a disaster to the people that go to church there on Sundays if it's not closed on Sundays. You don't want to have a train running around that place. Nobody wants a train running around that place. I think that's a joke. And three parking lots where there should only be just one. I agree with a fishing pier. I agree with a boat access if it's necessary, but you could probably do better providing boat access behind the Grand Centurions. And then you have a boathouse and a floating pier out there. I just don't understand what a boathouse is for unless you're going to start renting kayaks. Is that what that's for? I don't know. But I think you're trying to stick five pounds of stuff in a 10-pound bag, or let's put it the other way around. You're trying to stick 10 pounds of stuff in a five-pound bag, and if you do it, you'll be making a big mistake and you'll be changing the character of Clark, New Jersey forever. That's all I got to say.
Honorable members of the Board, my name is Daniel Green. I live in Clark on the reservoir. I've lived there for 40 years. So I have a big interest in what you have planned for the development of the Clark Reservoir. In the early 1990s, a group that I led saved the Clark Reservoir from development plans by Middlesex Water Company. And due to that, today we have this opportunity to develop a nice recreation park that's friendly both to wildlife and to residents. So now we're asking the county to return the favor and to show respect for the rights of residential property owners adjacent to the reservoir, particularly with regard to privacy, safety, and quality of life. While we strongly support the dredging of the reservoir and have no objection to a passive recreation park behind St. Agnes Church, we are expressing our strong opposition to the proposed walkway adjacent to the rear border of the properties on the north side of Francis Drive. While we understand the importance of providing pedestrian access and promoting community connectivity, we have serious concerns about the impact this walkway will have on our properties and our quality of life. An additional concern is the proposed recreational train that would operate about 10 feet away from the eastern Francis Drive border rear property lines. The train could operate from dawn till dusk seven days per week, creating a severe noise and privacy concern. Both of these proposals represent an extreme insensitivity to the rights of residential property owners and would cause a devastating destruction of property value. Specifically, we are concerned about, number one, privacy. The walkway and train will be located mere feet from our property lines, compromising our privacy and creating a sense of unease. A minimum of a 50-foot buffer space should be provided between any construction or walkways and residential properties. If there is not enough land for such a buffer, then no development should be allowed in such areas. We also have concerns for safety. The increased foot traffic and potential for lording will pose a risk to our family's safety and security. We will never again be able to feel secure and always will be in fear of possible safety problems. Particularly, a walkway behind our homes within feet of our homes will be a conduit for potential criminal activity that will greatly exacerbate the feeling of being insecure. Noise pollution with the walkway and the train would generate additional noise with machinery, bells, whistles, and pedestrians disrupting peaceful enjoyment of our property. The property value will be negatively impacted, making it less desirable and affecting its resale value in a negative way. The environmental impact is also an issue which, with the increased foot traffic and the construction process, will harm the natural habitat and wildlife in the area. The walkways and the train with no setback or buffer would violate residents' rights to privacy and the peaceful use of their property. There are no other parks in Union County that have walking paths right up against residential property lines. There are always substantial buffer zones between walkways and residential property lines, so why aren't we being given the same consideration? With this park, Union County does seem to be trying to do too much and too little space. So we're urging the county to revise their plans and remove the walkway behind Francis Drive and have pedestrian and bicycle traffic, which can be easily redirected from the park for a short distance down Madison Hill Road and Raritan Road. That way, there would be no need to disturb the residents of Francis Drive. Ideally, there should be no walkways at all between any residential properties and the reservoir. There is plenty of available space for walkways along the north banks of the central lake of the reservoir, which are bordered by non-residential uses such as the Deutscher Club, the Little League, the high school, the municipal building, and the library. No harm would be done by limiting walkways to those areas. And the train does not belong in a densely populated residential area. This park would be surrounded by the Genesee Drive Development.
It is time, sir.
I'm sorry? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
You can give that to Clark, sir, but it's time. Your time is up, sir. I'm sorry. You can give the petition to the clerk. You can give the petition to the clerk.
I have two items. One is an agenda item and one is not an agenda item. So do I get 10 minutes, 5 minutes, or I get 5 minutes to cover both of them? Okay. Nancy Twoska is Clark, New Jersey. The first, I'll talk about the Clark Recreation Center being proposed by the county. I want to start by saying I'm not a tree hugger. Actually, I think most trees make a mess and belong in parks and woods and not on private properties where they fall on houses and clog gutters. On the other hand, I feel trees that are growing naturally for tens or hundreds of years are worth saving. At the last town council meeting, I became aware of a project Union County is embarking on to turn two beautiful lots of natural preserves in Clark, New Jersey into asphalt and playgrounds. After I was born, I came home from the hospital to Clark, New Jersey, when it was lots of woods and farms. As a kid, I played with the other neighborhood kids in the woods behind our houses until developers got a hold of the Hoffman property and changed the idyllic area to homes and asphalt. Back then, at least, the developers left trees on the properties. Now there are no single-family houses being built, no woods, no farms. Okay, yes, this is your first Dean's farm for now. What Clark can now brag about are huge apartment complexes, storage facilities, and asphalt. Not exactly what I am proud of. I know we can't turn back the clock, but we have a chance to save a bit of the past by asking you to rethink the project on Madison Hill Road and Wendell Place. The dredging and aeration of the reservoir are great plans, and so are a boat launch and fishing pier, but the rest of the plans are just another destruction of nature for performative gadgets that need maintenance, increases traffic on a road with speeding issues already, and attracts visitors who leave garbage and make noise. So the quiet space that used to be there is now an amusement park, the topper being a kiddie train. You already took a big part of the Roway Park for a football soccer field. I live near that park, so I get a lot of music from the bands and from the soccer players playing their music. And you're also talking about taking a chunk of the Watinna Park in Roway for a dog park. I hope you will work with the citizens of Clark who are speaking out in objection to the size and scope of the Clark Reservoir project and proposed recreation area. Well, here is a picture. Why can't Clark have this? Wouldn't that be nice? Take your children walking through nature instead of riding a kiddie train, looking at a clock tower, sitting at a gazebo. I hope you will rethink this plan and listen to the cries from the taxpayers who are forced to pay for government and oppose this plan. Thank you. My second is a question, which I was here for last meeting and commented on, and I think this is related to it, on the Department of Engineering Public Works and Facilities Management Number Two, the Ashbrook Restoration Project in an amount not to exceed $881,000. I'm wondering, is that related to fixing the golf course? If I can...
We do the answers after.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you. Can I leave this picture with the... That's a park in Staten Island, congested Staten Island. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Delia Collins, Clark, New Jersey. I have three areas that I'd like to talk about. The first one is the Clark Recreation Area. I would like to invite you all to come to Clark and sit behind St. Agnes Church and enjoy the wildlife that is there. I did there, I sat there one day, and there are wildlife. And enjoy wildlife. Enjoy the peace and quiet. Today, I came down St. George's Avenue all the way into Elizabeth, and all I heard was beep, 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 beep. We don't need this in Clark on Madison Hill Road. Second part of this, about security for the people that live along this walking trail. Are there going to be officers stationed at this park 24/7, or is there going to be a sign just saying the Clark, I mean, the park is closed at dusk? Boating accidents. Who's going to respond? Clark does not have a boat in their police department or in their first aid squad, which is right next door to the reservoir. You've had four years to conduct your playground, just, sorry, your playground development. We've only had a few weeks to kind of see what's going on over there. Okay, on another subject, on Resolution 24-459, I live in that area of Walnut Avenue and Chester Lang button Clark. I brought this up at one of the township meetings in Cranford. Approaching the railroad bridge from Raritan Road going towards the center of Cranford, there are trees along the area right before the bridge, and then when you come up to go into Chester Lang. These trees are blocking the hawk light that's there for pedestrians to cross. Maybe you can get some county public works people to trim these trees so people could see. It starts at Allen Okel Place and the other side of Lexington Avenue. If you take a ride down there, it dips and then it goes up, and people cannot see the hawk light for the pedestrians that have to cross from the schoolchildren and the pedestrians that walk the area. And on Resolution 24, I mean, 2024-461, about the deer management, I feel it is disgusting that in 2024 and 2025, Union County has to result or act on killing the deer. And also, this area in Clark was one of the areas that was marked for the bow hunt in 2023. So sorry, guys, hunters, you'll be missing an area of Clark. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the Commission and Board, various golden nuggets, Bruce Patterson, Garwood, New Jersey. These are all Resolution questions, and if I have time, I'll touch upon the reservoir. REZO 454 is awarding Tricon Enterprises, again, the Passaic River Bridge project for 3.5 million. This is definitely confusing. In December, we discussed this bridge and a lawsuit, and you noted Tricon was thrown off the site due to non-performance. You also then gave $100,000 to Jersey Precast, the third-tier contractor. So I'd like to know, what was the original bid price back in 2016, and what has happened to the $1 million grant we received for this project by REZO 2016-113? REZO 455 is awarding Fletcher Creamer Construction a contract of nearly $900,000 for an Ashbrook Restoration Project, which... Restoration Project, which another resident had asked about. What exactly is being restored? Also, what is happening to the lien that PSE and G regarded the county trespassing and damaging their right-of-way at the Ashbrook Swamp? And also, the charges from the NJDEP regarding the major damage to the Ashbrook Swamp wetlands that you committed. REZO 459 is allowing Cranford to reduce the speed limit on their Walnut Avenue from 40 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour. Garwood just did the same on our South Avenue. Isn't this telling you and all the other elected officials in the state that something is not right, that there is so much traffic, people becoming desperate, going from point A to point B and speeding? We are the densest state overpopulated with people and automobiles. Our roads are at 100% capacity. Intersections rated F. Commissioner Dellsford understands this. We have a state program of affordable housing to be built, yet the developers are allowed to build an additional five luxury-rate market-rate units for every one affordable unit. This is the underlying problem. As commissioners, you must join and advocate for change to this program impacting our infrastructure and quality of life. This recent affordable law resolves nothing. Common sense needs to come into play, not politics from developers of these high-density projects that donate to political campaigns. REZO 460 is increasing GPC Inc.'s contract another half million dollars to 22.4 million for the fire code upgrades at the county courthouse. What is this half million dollars for? How much of this $22 million is the courthouse stairwell issue inspection failures that sorely needs to be resolved? REZO 465 is advocating for a surcharge on corporations to fund New Jersey transit. Just another ill-conceived tax by the chuckleheads down in Trenton. Commissioner Dellsford will understand this. Corporations are bailing out in New Jersey en masse, and then their campuses are being converted into huge, high-density residential projects. This tax just forces more companies to leave New Jersey, one of the highest-tax states in the nation. It's a downward death spiral of our once-great state. You want to save New Jersey transit, advocate hitting up all those greedy developers building the hundreds of thousands of high-density residential projects. REZO 482 has given CME associates nearly half a million dollars in paper shuffling for Warrenankle Park baseball field improvements, not even for a shovel in the ground. What an astronomical waste of tax monies, except when you find that CME has donated 150 grand to the commissioners and their cronies' campaigns, and this is just a non-competitive contract freely given out. I'm sure you guys are happy to approve this one. REZO 491 is increasing Genova Burns' legal contract up to $110,000 in the suit Andy Kim versus Union County, which involved the reformatting of our election ballot. The legal contract now up to 110 grand because you wanted to keep a poorly-designed ballot intact, which favored your political anointed. And it looks like you lost. Instead of forcing the public to pay for this travesty, can we get County Clerk Joanna Jopia and Elections Director DiRado to split the costs since they may be the responsible parties? To the reservoir, I read the CME study of April 2024, and it notes that actually over 50% is actually will be impervious surface, impervious being that water won't be able to come down. So you have to have a stormwater basin off on the side, which is open, where actually the suggestion is put the stormwater basin underneath the ground, much like the developers do with the high-density projects. That's my suggestion on that.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, I will formally close this portion of the meeting. I would like to ask Director Polakay and our engineer, Rick Mateus, to speak upon Resolutions 454, 455, 459, and 460.
Are you chairman?
Thank you.
Resolution 454, 2.1 million of that is grant money.
Right.
And 2.1 million of that grant money is still good.
Thank you.
Secondly, the Ashbrook Swamp is also a remediation project, and hopefully may alleviate some of the flooding in the area.
It's for the brook itself, not the golf course.
Yeah. The brook is named the Ashbrook.
Yep.
460 is the stairway. It's for additional equipment to bring the fire pressure, the fire-water pressure up to code.
Chair, if I might, maybe on the Tricon matter, just to make clear, Tricon is no longer on the job. This was a longstanding litigation in which the county settled the case with Tricon's bonding company, who are paying substantially most of the cost for Tricon failing to fulfill their obligation under the original contract. This resolution is really just to clarify the language of the prior resolutions. That's why Tricon is mentioned. But they are off the job. The bonding company has designated a new company, and this long-stalled job will move forward. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
And for the question about the trees by the crosswalk, DPW will take a look.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion to adopt Resolutions 2024-453 through
So moved. Second?
A motion was made by Vice Chairwoman Leon and seconded by Commissioner Williams. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Bodak?
Yes to all, abstaining on 488 and 490.
Commissioner Dellsford?
Aye to all, abstaining on 457 and 489.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye to all.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Leon?
Aye.
And Chairwoman Palmieri-Muddad?
Aye.
Let the record reflect, you have eight votes in the affirmative on all resolutions, with the exception of Resolutions 2024-457, 488, 489, and 490, where you have seven votes in the affirmative with one abstention.
Thank you. At this time, I will call upon my commissioner colleagues for their reports and comments, and I will start with Commissioner Bodak.
County Manager Oatman, the Parks Director Victoria Drake and her staff, the county police, and all of those county employees who worked so hard to provide a fantastic Rhythm and Blues Festival concert this past Saturday. It was a wonderful afternoon, drew with large enthusiastic crowds. I want to thank you all for your help. The Union County Board of County Commissioners invites nonprofit organizations to attend the New Fundamentals of Managing a Nonprofit: A Free Professional Development Workshop on Wednesday, June 12, 2024, from 3:30 to 5:00 p.m. This will be presented on Zoom by Pat Boas, founder of Boas and Associates, a firm that provides management and training to nonprofits. Participants will learn about today's best practices, policies, and procedures for operating a successful nonprofit. Organizations can register at www.ucnj.org/nonprofit-workshop. This workshop is coordinated and hosted by the Union County Office of Cultural and Heritage Affairs and is made possible by funds from the New Jersey State Council on the Arts, a partner agency of the National Endowment for the Arts. For more information, contact the Union County Office of Cultural and Heritage Affairs at 908-558-2550. That concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Dellsford?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Union County Board of County Commissioners invites all residents to bring their personal documents and sensitive papers to the county's next free paper shredding event. The next event of the 2024 season will be taking place on Saturday, June 15, at Plainfield High School's Arlington Avenue parking lot, located at 950 Park Avenue in Plainfield. The shredding event begins at 9:00 a.m., and it's rain or shine. It will continue until 1:00 p.m., unless the shredding truck reaches its capacity. Residents are encouraged to arrive as close to the beginning of the event as possible to ensure that their capacity for their material. Residents are limited to 10 pounds, which is roughly four bags or boxes, per vehicle, and are intended for personal, sensitive, and residentially-generated documents only. Business documents will not be accepted for shredding at this event. For complete instructions and information, please visit www.ucnj.org/recycle or call the Union County Recycling Hotline at 908-654-9889. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Kowalski?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to just point out that with our Resolution 2024-465, we're calling for Governor Phil Murphy and State Senate President Skatari and Speaker of the Assembly Craig Cofflin and the legislature to support the corporate transit fee and to work to reinstate the full corporate surcharge so that New Jersey Transit and other essential services can have the money to do the repairs of our trains and our train system that we so desperately need. New Jersey Transit covers one of the most, as has been mentioned here, one of the busiest areas of the country, and most other transit systems have a dedicated funding source. New Jersey Transit does not, and it would help things immensely to have funding that every year is dedicated to New Jersey Transit. In addition, of course, you know, we pay for tickets, but that doesn't really cover the cost of running the trains. So I thank my colleagues for joining me on this, and also, we're joining the Raritan Valley Rail Coalition, the Raritan Valley Line Mayors, and many other legislators who support this effort. So thanks for that. And also, I want to thank everyone who participated in the primary election, whether you voted or whether you ran for office. This is an important part of our democracy, so thanks to all of you. That's it, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Baker?
Yes, I'd like to echo my colleagues' position in terms of the primary election and want to thank those who did participate in that democratic process. The Surrogates Court Office in Westfield has expanded its hours for probate and administrative services. Appointment-only services will be offered at the Westfield office on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. The office is located in the county's Colleen Fraser Building, 300 North Avenue East in Westfield. Residents can make their appointments through the Surrogates Office website, www.ucnj.org/surrogate, or by contacting the Elizabeth's Office directly at 908-527-4280. The office hours are from 8:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and the last appointment will be accepted at 3:15 p.m. So that is hopeful, I mean, needful information for those who may need surrogate services. So take advantage of it if that is the case. That concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Baker. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Chair. We, the Board of Commissioners, we are excited to invite all residents to the inaugural Union County LGBTQ Pride 5K and Fun Color Run at Oak Ridge Park on Saturday, this Saturday, June 8. In addition to the race, residents can enjoy family-friendly activities and explore various resource tables from Union County Departments and our community partners. Color Run is a unique kind of race where participants can walk or run along a chosen route while being showered with colored eco-friendly powders. Check-in opens at 8:00 a.m., and the 5K kicks off at 9:00 a.m., followed by a non-competitive fun run at 9:15 a.m. The first 100 registrants, we still have some spaces left, will receive a free Pride 5K and Fun Color Run t-shirt. There is a registration for both the 5K and Fun Run, and let's see, and registration information can be found on www.ucnj.org/lgbtq. The 5K race is certified and professionally timed by split-second racing, ensuring an accurate and enjoyable race experience for all. For more info, please contact the Union County Office of LGBTQ Affairs to register for the 5K and Fun Color Run. You may visit www.ucnj.org/lgbtq. Thank you, Chairwoman. That is it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Granados?
Thank you, Chair. I'm excited to remind everyone that our county spray grounds and pools are now open on weekends through June 29. And starting June 29 through September 2, they'll be open seven days a week. We've had an amazing start to the season with over 3,600 residents enjoying Wheeler Spray Park and more than 2,700 visiting our pool over the first two weekends. So far, the participation has been incredible, and we're just getting started. To make your visits even more enjoyable, Union County residents have the added advantage of purchasing tickets online. If you can go to ucnj.org and purchase a ticket through the website. This not only guarantees your access, but also helps you avoid long lines, so you can spend more time having fun. Our parks and facilities offer a wide range of activities for everyone, whether you're into tennis, disc golf, archery, nature walks, playgrounds, or any other outdoor activity or sport, we have something for you. So I hope everyone grabs their family and friends and enjoys this beautiful summer at our Union County Park System. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. County Council, Bruce Birkin?
Thank you, Chair. Nothing?
Thank you. County Manager?
No problem, Mr.
Thank you. Vice Chairwoman Leon?
Thank you. The Union County Board of County Commissioners and the Department of Parks and Recreation invite all middle and high schools to participate in the 2024 Fairy House Art Contest. This contest invites students from sixth to 12th grade throughout Union County to design and create magical fairy houses, with a special prize awarded for the winning entry. Participating schools are asked to submit one fairy house, which will be evaluated by a panel of professional judges and displayed in one of Union County parks. For a list of acceptable materials for design, please visit our website. The progression of the project must be submitted through the following link provided in the Participating students must fill out and sign a media release. Schools must submit the registration by Monday, June 24, 2024, no later than 5:00 p.m., and the project must be completed by Tuesday, October 15, 2024. For more information on how to register and participate, please visit ucnj.org/fairytrailapplication. Thank you. And also, I want to wish my colleagues and those that celebrate Happy Pride Month. Love is love.
Thank you. The Union County Board of County Commissioners announces the return of the Union County Women Mean Business Summit on Tuesday, June 11, 2024. The Women Mean Business Summit will take place at the Galving Hill Golf Course, located at 3 Golf Drive in Kenilworth, and pre-registration is required. Admission is $55, and that includes a continental breakfast and lunch. Attendees will be able to attend a variety of workshops and discussions with panelists from various industries and professions, ready to share their knowledge. We have great sessions already planned, so I'm looking forward to the day. We also have a fabulous keynote speaker. Her name is Adina Bayou, founder of the Adina Bayou and Companies. She emigrated to the United States after escaping civil war in Liberia at the age of 13. She was inspired by her grandmother, and she owns seven restaurants, including four IHOP franchises, and is the second-largest employer in Irvington. She co-founded Cornbread, a farm-to-table soul food chain, and launched Brick City Vegan. A successful real estate developer, she transforms vacant and unused spaces, including the former Irvington General Hospital site, into low-income housing. She's going to be a phenomenal speaker. I am so excited to meet her. For more information on the Women Mean Business Summit, please visit ucnj.org/ucwmb. And this is a super, super-busy time of year for everyone. Over the past couple of weeks, we've had two- Over the past couple of weeks, we've had two flag raisings in front of the courthouse. We had a Portuguese flag raising a week or so ago, and then the other day, earlier this week, we had our pride flag raising. And I think the two of those flag raisings were some of the biggest crowds we've had. It was really great to see so many people come out and support both of those flag raisings. They were really fun to be at, so I'm so happy and proud that we had so many people participate. We also have tons of graduations that are coming up in the next couple of weeks. They may have already happened, or they're coming up in the next couple of weeks, so I want to wish all of our graduates the best, whether they're graduating from preschool, kindergarten, middle school, elementary school, high school, college. They're all great successes, and families and friends are always super proud to be a part of them, so we're so proud of our students as well. And we also had a great Rhythm and Blues Festival. I know Commissioner Bodak spoke on that. We had a great turnout there, and it was a lot of fun, and I want to thank our Parks staff for putting that together. It was really, really hot, as it always is, but they did a fabulous job in making sure that the program ran seamlessly, so thank you. And with that being said, I think I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.[1784.88]